Good evening, welcome to tonight's school board meeting, May 2nd. I will say that I again am here in place of our Meg, she is still doing some bereavement leave, but we hope to have her back at her next meeting. With that, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, now I'll read the mission statement. The Newmarket School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education. We ensure a safe and successful learning community. We embrace diversity and respond to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We strive to work with the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. Okay, now we have recognition.
We have two, yes. We have two Newmarket High School students here tonight who really, really have distinguished themselves in some competition that was part of their program at Seco School of Technology. So I would like to first invite up the teacher, I haven't met her yet, but I'm hoping she's here, there it is, good, Anne DeMarco, who is from SST. And Anne, if you would, introduce yourself, what you teach there, and then a bit about the program, and then we'll get into recognizing these kids.
Lucky to face the stripper.
Talk right into this, yes.
There's plenty of cameras.
I do know.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Anne DeMarco, I teach at the Seco School of Technology, where I teach animal and plant science. This is my 20th year of teaching at the Seco School of Technology. These fine young ladies from your school district attended our state convention after spending two years with me, where we cover large and small animals, plants, you name it, the field of agriculture is so broad, it's my job to give them a flavor of everything it has to offer, and excite them into the field of also learning, and to show them the diversity of agriculture, and hopefully have them come forward and be ambassadors of agriculture, so we all realize how important agriculture is to all of our lives. As a result of two years, these two young ladies spent a lovely weekend with me at the Mount Washington Hotel, and they went up with 38 other members from the Seco School of Technology FFA chapter. They pushed themselves to do a variety of different events, both of them entered some written proficiency work. Lucie Anne's placed at the state level and will be going on to the national level, they also competed in a variety of personal events. In addition, Lucie Anne ran for state officer, and she was selected to become the state secretary, if I can say that. So it was a very proud weekend for all of them. In addition, the Seco School of Technology won 12 state titles, we have three state officers now, we came back with $5,000 in scholarship and awards, and it was a very successful weekend, so thank you for having us here tonight, thank you very, very much.
Anne, can I ask you a question?
Yes, certainly.
How do they get elected to officer?
This was a long process, and they have to do a lot of qualifications ahead of time, they have to be involved in the chapter, they have to have approval from me, that they understand our FFA creed, can demonstrate about 10 procedures, parliamentary procedure, hours of community service, hours of involvement in the chapter, there's quite a few things, they have to go up our chapter ladder, and they have to have earned their chapter degree and earn their state degree, which is given out at state convention. In February, forms had to be submitted, Lucie Anne had to go for some meetings in Concord for an interview and a test, things like that, and then at state convention itself, she was involved in numerous little meetings and interviews, and she was being watched in a team activity, and how she did socially, things like that, so it was quite extensive, and it's a nominating committee, and they would look at the students and figure out where their skills and traits are best suited, so though she may have wanted to be treasurer, they saw her skills better for being the secretary. So it's quite an extensive process.
Thank you.
One of the honors that Lulu received was something to do with horse judging and part of the state team that's going to the nationals, could you talk about that?
Certainly. In addition to our state convention, the national FFA throughout the course of the year encourages students to do a variety of different events, and we start in the fall, and we go straight through until that past weekend. Not happening at the Mount Washington prior was our state horse judging event, where Lucie Anne was part of an event, she judged horses, took a written test, did some oral reasonings, team activity, lots of different things, and so she's placed on the state winning horse judging team, which is eligible to go to Louisville, Kentucky this year.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me bring both of them up here, first Lulu Dubois. Did I say that right, is it Dubois?
Dubois.
Dubois, sorry.
Thank you.
Congratulations, awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you, stay right here, and Sarah Frotten. Sarah, awesome job, congratulations. Thank you, thank you very much. Really proud of you, and wish you both well. Now, you're both seniors, right? Continue on with animal science in some fashion.
I'm going on to integrated ag at UNH at Thompson School for two years, and then you also get to choose a side and all do business.
Wow, awesome.
I'm actually in the year of law.
No kidding. Congratulations and good luck. Good, thank you, congratulations on both for coming. We're going to take a five-minute recess, so everybody can kind of congratulate our honored guests, and then we'll let them make a graceful exit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Prior to budget season, maybe monthly or close to that. There seems to be a lot of interest in getting an understanding of, a better feel for the account structure and kind of how the budget works. There's interest, obviously, in having these folks come and speak to various questions that they have that run from soup to nuts, to forecasting, to various things. Well, I'll refer to the meeting if anyone cares to watch online or on Channel 13. But I thought it was a great exchange of ideas and a very well-run meeting the other night. So I'm looking forward to a productive year.
Great. Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report, that's all that I had. Everything else will be covered later on.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. And we'll move on to the facilities report.
Facility's report. First of all, fire and life safety. On Tuesday, April 30th, there was a meeting of a variety of different people, all of whom have an interest in our science egress construction project. That involves school district representatives from the school and the SAU, town fire and building code departments, the architectural firm, Harriman Associates, STC Engineering, they're the engineering firm that specifically is geared towards fire and life safety design. Scott Lawson Group is hazardous materials handling, hazardous materials and removal. And Meridian Construction, that's the firm that you hired the last time. So we discussed quite a few things, mostly logistical stuff, but let me just go through them. First of all, we're going to have, whether we're going to have occupation of the building during construction, and we'll deal with that. Temporary loss of fire alarm safety systems, so there'd be temporary times when the alarm system would be off or the sprinkler system. So we had to coordinate thinking around that and how long we could be without them. Hazardous materials removal, the demolition, the removal of debris, location of the dumpsters, readiness of the rooms for the start of construction, which is June 25th, permitting, weekly site visits, I'm sorry, site meetings that we will have. And we, again, still reaffirm that it's an eight-week project, that the goal is that we will start on June 25th and be ready for the opening of the regular school year. So the next step really is for Harriman and Meridian Construction to finalize the drawings. I think Dan has mentioned here before that they weren't totally there, and then when you use a construction manager process, you bring the construction manager in to finalize the drawings and be involved in that process. So that is, that's moving forward, and I think we're really on track to certainly have everything start on time. Updates on facility improvements. The Johnson monitoring system was installed over April vacation. Eckerd and Johnson's programmer, you may recall, we talked about having a web-based system by which we could control air handlers and heating schedules. And so they've redone all of that, and Bob has told me he thinks we'll see a difference in our electric bill and hopefully in our oil consumption. The electricity bid is on my report, but Christine will take that up later on. They finished rewiring the junior, senior high school for wireless. We've gone to industrial strength is how I characterize it, with new equipment and new wiring all the way through. So I'm really pleased we've accomplished that. The other thing on facilities, the Oyster River tuition agreement, it's been a while since the 14th, and it's under program too, but I'll speak to it here. One of the things that I'd hope to be able to report to, we still don't have, and I know Superintendent in, Oyster River doesn't have either. We both sent the draft tuition agreement to attorneys to say, give us a legal review, and it's been weeks, but we pressed them, and we've still not heard back. So I have nothing to report on that. I can tell you that I've put into the draft, because I know we've talked about it, very specific language about notice to terminate. We want to make sure that whoever gives notice to terminate, there's plenty of time for us to then react, because obviously we'd be, we were without a school, so we would need plenty of time to be able to even, if that's the decision, to plan and construct a school. So I put that in, and we'll discuss that. At our next meeting, I also added some specific language that we'll talk about at the next meeting, that will create a date certain at which there will, discussions about joining the cooperative will be initiated. Doesn't mean we will, but at a certain time. Okay, let's at least examine this and see whether either party is interested in having Newmarket join the cooperative. So those are things I know we'll be discussing at our next meeting, which is May 14th, at 6:00 PM at Oyster River High School. The agenda for that meeting, we'll update the financials. I think I've reported out to you already, and if people who are interested, the most up-to-date information is on our website. There's a link on the homepage to tuition agreement, and it'll tell you all a lot more about this. But updating the financial analysis that's going to support the determination of the tuition rate, and then also the projection over time of that tuition rate. So we're still working on that, and we'll work on it some more. Hopefully, we'll have these legal reviews ready for the 14th. We're going to talk about value-added, which for us means, besides joining together and continuing the program at Oyster River, it's really, what more do we, can be done? What more will both sides benefit from by joining together? And we think there are plenty of things we can identify and work toward, and so we need to identify those. There will be a report from transition teams. Each school assembled a transition team of administrators and teachers to consider the logistics and the ramifications of joining the two schools. And, you know, we've talked before, would it be phased over a period of years and so forth, and how would it be done, and what activities? I know for us, our team met today, and I think the same has happened in Oyster River, in preparation for a meeting next week, when the teams will meet jointly, and then they'll be, have two meetings under their belt to report back to our meeting of representatives. So there are things that are still happening in the interim since we last met. So that's all that I have about a tuition agreement.
And that's it?
And that's it for facilities.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to make a couple comments, which are, you know, we've, this has been a long road of solving our facilities problems, and I just have to particularly, Dr. Hayes, commend you on your efforts in running with the ball. People don't see it, I think, from, at home, but, you know, we're trying to understand what our facilities needs are, the elementary school and the junior, senior high school, from, and realizing, you know, what's the best financial situation should we move in that direction? And then now, working with the tuition opportunity, there's the finance piece, there's the transition piece, there's busing, there's the middle school reconfiguration potential, and then program changes and what advantage there might be. And I, from my view, I'm seeing you running at that just as hard as the facility, you know, building a new school, what that would look like. And I just want to say publicly how impressed I am with the level of effort that you've been putting in on pursuing what the impact is in any of the alternatives that we're going to be faced with, hopefully very soon.
Thank you.
I just had a couple, one quick question. You mentioned the Wi-Fi.
Yes.
Oh, I was going to ask that question, but I forgot. Go ahead.
Is it any better?
You know, I haven't, I haven't asked, but I haven't had to be there.
No, no.
You know, isn't it nice when technology's not on the forefront of everybody's, you know?
Well, I just remember hearing stories of like our own principal having a thing right above his desk and not being able to. So I was just hoping that maybe-
I have not had a chance to ask.
All right.
Okay, so how is it? But it's got to be better.
Well, yeah, anything's better, I suppose.
Yeah, I know, right.
And the other thing, the inspections, was that just for our?
Oh, that's right. I didn't, I didn't say that. Yeah. I'm sorry.
I think that's wonderful.
I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that out. You may, and I hope I don't embarrass Christine, but you may recall Christine making a comment at the last meeting that made it sound like-
Oh, oh. One word. It changed.
Don't go on the bleachers, you know? And I'm saying, well, wait a minute, no, that's not so.
Not that I reacted.
I'm not turning red or anything.
Sorry. And so, and so, I had, already had kind of in my back pocket, because Bob had already given me these, he says, Jim, here's our annual inspections. These are the inspections that we do regularly, and that's why I made the comment that night, because I knew we had really, we'd already done the bleachers earlier this year, and we are going to be doing a considerable amount of work on the bleachers this summer to make sure they're as safe as can be. But yeah, let me, let me run, and that, so then what I did is I took Bob's list, I gave it to Brian O'Connor, who is the head custodian at the elementary, and I said, match your list against this and tell me how this looks. So for both schools, these are, these are what we do. School fire and safety, we have the Newmarket Fire Department or the State Farm Marshal. These are state-required inspections. They can be done at any time and often throughout the year. They're certainly annual. School fire extinguishers, they're semi-annual, states required, includes kitchens at both schools, consumer science stove hood systems at the junior, senior high, and includes any repairs and placements, and replacements. Sprinkler systems, we have sprinkler systems in both schools, so we have Superior Fire Protection who comes in quarterly and inspects and repairs anything that needs repair. Our alarm and security systems are looked at semi-annually, and again, same thing, any inspections, repairs. We have the motion detectors and smoke detectors and security cameras and pull-down fire alarms. It's all looked at on a semi-annual basis. Emergency lighting, that's looked at semi-annually as well. HVAC system, it's, Eckerd and Johnson does the junior, senior high, you've heard us talk about them a lot. At the elementary school, we use a different firm, Wilkins Mechanical, but there's semi-annual inspections of air handlers, boiler inspections, preventive maintenance and repairs. The underground oil tanks are annually inspected, leak monitoring, overfill protection, corrosion protection, testing and repairs. Backflow prevention is looked at semi-annually as well, includes inspections and repairs to backflow water lines. So that's both schools. And then at the junior, senior high, they have the chairlift, and so that is inspected annually, and again, takes care of repairs. It's a state inspection, state required. And the gym bleachers and the backboards get annual inspections, so.
If I may-
There's a lot that is routine, and now I'm going to turn it over to Christine.
And I will add that we also, I'm the chair of the safety committee, so not only do we have safety for the buildings, but we also ensure the safety for our staff. And we recently, when I came on board a couple months ago, we actually did a property liability audit in the building. And what they do is they go through and they just look at, you know, potential hazards that a staff member or student could trip. We have to make sure there's a fast egress to escape for, you know, if we have a fire or things like that. And we had a very good audit, so just to let you know that the building's safe for everyone and everything, so.
Wonderful. Now, are these, with all these different companies, are these like contracts that we renew annually?
Yes.
Or that we do?
Yes, we do.
So do we ever change it up? Do we ever, I mean, is there ever a need to do that? I mean, I don't know what the typical-
No, it's a great question. No, you should just seek quotes just to keep, you know, the person who's been doing it for, for us for 20 years, just to make sure they're, you know, trying to keep costs down. But I did review it, so that's why I'm familiar with them, because I pay them, so, but yeah.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
That's very helpful. Any other questions? Okay. It's like we're looking at the program middle school construction options.
Yeah, let me set the scene a little bit here. I spoke to you, I think, two meetings ago, that by the end of this school year, I would like you to whittle down all of the options that are on our plate, down to one, in this scenario. If our nine through 12 students go to Oyster River, we are still left with the building that the middle school is in, and with all of its problems, and we're left with middle school students. So we need to, as Cliff talked a moment ago, about getting all of the costs of these transitions, we need to get a cost for whatever it is we're doing about that facility. And certainly, we know what fire and life safety is, but I hope we're doing more than that, and that's why I'm raising the question. You have, because of last week's conversation, you have the option of dealing with a school that is a five-through-eight school or a six-through-eight school. You have the option of building a new school across the street, as we have done in designing a six-through-12 facility, or you could go back, and you may hear from Dan on that, but you could go back and revisit the addition renovation concept on the current site. Somehow, between now and June, rather than having Dan and I work the summer exploring multiple options, it'd be very helpful if you can whittle it down to, here is what we'd like you to come up with a price on, and a design and a price on, and then we could work the summer on that, and one would think that sometime early in the fall, we'd have a design and some pricing information, so. So with that said, I've asked Dan to come and talk a bit about those different options and what it may mean for you, and answer any questions you may have.
Hello again. One of the very first things you have to do is figure out what your needs are, and it's a program review. We did that with the new school, and what happened, we collaborated with Jim. I did a program analysis based on Department of Ed and generic guidelines. Jim and Chris, the principal, worked on specific program needs, so we collaborated that into a matrix. That gave us a generic idea of how many square feet, association of spaces, and it led to, on that project, that the middle school would be separated from the high school students. If you're going to do a five-through-eight, you're going to have to think about, the fifth grade is, are you going to have them integrated or not? Six, seven, and eight is pretty typical, but when you hit five, there's some thought process needs to be done. And we've done five, fifth grade in a, in a middle school or junior high school, there's back-and-forth debate, are they too young to be thrown into a junior high setting, or is there an interim grade level? So that has to be discussed, but that has to be articulated into a program and then into a building plan. So that whole aspect takes some time, some efforts, some dialogue, some discussion. It goes back and forth. Then the next step is similar to last year, you have a choice to renovate and add or build new, and there's pros and cons there. When we did the junior, senior high school, we found that the delta difference between renovation additions and new wasn't a huge amount of money spread. They actually came down that it was in the same ballpark. And then you have all the logistics to re-review, is, if you're going to renovate, you need to remove the students temporarily during the construction. You have to deal with all those things, plus all the discoveries we have with the existing site, such as utilities being in places that you have to move, the expense thereof, parking, do you still have enough parking on one side versus two? So you've got to go through all that review. And I guess what Jim is saying, if we can hone down into one arena instead of designing four scenarios, which is really what we're looking at, can we narrow it down to maybe two? Or it would be really wonderful if we can do one. Just the time and effort and cost to go through that. But that is something that takes a length of time. It doesn't mean it takes three or four months, but it takes time to review and absorb and let it sit and let it brew and then revisit it and talk. And what we had before was some public meetings with some public review and input, so it's nice to have that as well, because you never know where you're going to lead down the path. So that's kind of where I'm looking at with Jim, is what do we do and how do we go about it, and to what degree do we undertake? How much do we undertake and try to limit the amount of time and effort and resources? Because it does take time and effort, so. And I can answer any specific questions or review any of the things that were continually discovered on the old school, too, as something that with the new construction manager, this is a brief, they started to pop ceilings, and they were surprised to see the condition of the building in the sense that it's, it's had, it's been around a long time and it's kind of worn out, so they were assuming a certain level of old building, but there's more, there's a lot more going on in there that's, that it needs a lot more care than I think anybody would ever anticipate, because once you start popping ceiling tiles and looking around, just like we discovered two summers in a row, every time we touched something, we found a bunch of things, and we're going to do the same thing, just go around. I don't know if you need to elaborate anymore on that, but that's something that I'm putting as a red flag, is that that building is not going to be cheap to renovate.
Well, I know specifically, you talked to me about the ceiling in the library, which is underneath the science classroom you're talking about. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, what's happening there, just take, take an idea, you've got a building that has a two-story section, and then the former gymnasium where now the band room is, was designed for a gym. If you were to get on the roof and you look at the two-story and you look at the gym, for instance, it's about three and a half feet, four feet shorter, because it was designed as a gym. So when they separated it, they squeezed the floor in, and I really mean that truly, because they didn't have your typical floor-to-floor heights that you would normally build in a new school. And with today's technology, you need more and more spaces between a ceiling and the structure. When I started out, we were looking at floors to floors about 11'4", went to 12'8", now it's 13'4". And a lot of that has to do with ductwork and mechanicals and all the systems that we now have that we didn't have. So what Jim is alluding to, when we started to take a look at this project three, four months ago, we're seeing this reality, when they squeezed in that floor, things got squeezed, and there is no room up there to move very easily. So there's one part in the library, for instance, if you enter the library and you go towards the very end where there used to be a lock area, they put a mechanical unit, and there was so little room that the bottom part of the mechanical unit touches the ceiling and the ceiling's bowed. Everybody thinks something's wrong, is they squeezed it in. So when we're involved with these renovations, we have to live with those conditions. Another example is we have a new fume hood on the second floor for the science. Fume hoods come a certain dimension, and with that, we needed a fire shutter. When we tried to fit it in, we had to shoemorn it in between beams, because there wasn't enough height to put in a standard-sized unit. It's like having an old fire station and a new fire truck, they're a little bit bigger.
Oh, okay, that's a good analogy.
It doesn't fit. So we had to wiggle around and work between structure, and it was predicated on what the structure was, rather than putting it where we wanted to. So those are the things that we keep seeing with the older part of the building. It's been recycled so many times that there's very little room to put things, and it's just going to continue to be a tough-
We're going to run out of space to put-
Yeah, this physically, the facility was, as I say, it was a gym, and it was designed a certain height, and we wanted to squeeze in another floor, and we actually did exactly that. You squeezed into the net of floor, and all the parameters were, everything was tight. So everything up above the ceiling, when, when we're going to do this work this summer, we have to take things down and put it back up, and it's like trying to squeeze everything back in, and there's not much room, so it's just very difficult.
You hadn't put this fume hood on yet.
No, but we found a place to put it, but it took two or three stabs to wiggle it. We actually had, if you go up in the science rooms, you will see this big bump, it's a big, huge beam. That's the main beam that held the roof of the gym. Well, when you cut it down, all of a sudden, that floor goes up to it. Both sides of that large beam, there's other little mini beams. Well, the ceiling had to be put in between things. And in between the little beams, we tried to squeeze in a fume hood, that it didn't have enough height for a standard fume hood. So standards don't work in that facility very well, so you're always trying to squeeze things in.
Will we pass inspection if-
Yes, we found a place, but we had to find a place that had enough ceiling height for the structure to get the fume hood, a shutter, and a piece of ductwork without bumping into something. And that was the squeeze play, that's constantly what we're finding on that building. We're renovating it to life safety, but when we touch something, we're trying to bring it up to standards. And as I say, it's like anything else, fire departments and fire stations are a great examples. Many of the fire stations we work on, we wind up having an old station. The overhead doors were meant for old fire trucks, but today, they got side-view mirrors and they've got other accoutrements, and old fire stations, a lot of places have to customize their fire trucks, because they can't back them in. We're doing the same thing. We're getting a fume hood that is customary and a 13-foot ceiling height, and you barely get 11. So when we put it in there, we're, we're trying to find a place to put things, and we're finding that with other items, too, with ductwork. We're trying to make duct, ductwork runs, and we're winding up hitting beams. So we come to a point, we have to go around, come back, so it's just, it's just very difficult. It's an old building, it's just, wasn't designed for what we're trying to do, and it's just the way it is.
If we, to shift back to middle school from, if I can, if we were to take that site and approach it as purely a middle school, we're still going to end up with the same approach, which I think would be demolition and phased construction.
The two pieces, the old part and the band room, we would still recommend to tear those down because of their state, and the more we find out, the more we're pretty adamant that that's not worth saving. The other approach we would do, because it would be a smaller school, is we would work around as many of the existing utilities that we had to move last time. But we're going to get to the point again of discussing, do we want a three-story building or a two-story, because the site still has some limitations. You still want parking, you're going to want some kind of play area, and we're going to have the dialogue, is it better to go across the street or have parking across the street? We're going to have that same dialogue again. So one thought was, is the approach of building a new school. The nice thing about building a new school is during construction, your existing school can stay in place, so you're not having that huge disturbance or spending that money on modules. You don't have as many, but it's that whole situation of working on a site that's occupied is always more difficult and expensive, just the nature of it. You have to phase it, you have to do it in sequence, and the students will have to be accommodated so they can occupy, which lengthens the amount of time, which is money. But by having the opportunity of the land across the street, you've got that opportunity to maybe look at it and maybe build a new, and keep also the gym. The gym is still, and the locker rooms are still part of the newer part, so unless you just simply want to take it down, it's a viable structure. I mean, there's no reason to take it down, other than if you just simply don't want to maintain it, because that's the only thing you have to do is maintain it. It will need its own boiler system, because we would remove it from the old plant. But we had that figured out on the last go-around, so.
I think we just need to prioritize, I mean, honestly, if we don't have money to build a new structure, then that option has to just be taken off the table straight off. I mean, we could sit and dream, I would love to see a new school, but we don't have the money. Am I right?
Well, when we did that, we looked at doing the renovation addition and the new, and they weren't that far apart.
Right, so-
Yeah, you're still spending money.
And we don't have it.
We don't have it.
Well, I have a couple of questions about, let me just back up a little bit, the total square footage number that was, that came up for the new school that you've done for the entire nine-through-12 new school, or actually nine-through-8, whatever. Was that based on the maximum square footage allowance?
Oh, no, it was based on your program.
Well, right, we came up with our program, but then you have to go to the DOE, that book that they have.
Right.
And did we just inflate those to be, we want the maximum-sized rooms, or is it-
No, no, we actually did the most part, the minimums.
Most of them were minimums, okay. I kind of thought that, but I-
Or standards, yeah. We didn't, we didn't, and there were some areas where, you know, programs weren't describing DOE, so we had to do an analysis of how many square feet you needed to make the program work. But for the most part, about 80% of the building, we used the Department of Ed guidelines, and we stayed pretty close to the minimums, unless there was a reason not to, but we didn't go and inflate anything.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's-
I just wanted to ask, so we would, my way of thinking would, the program analysis would have to be done again?
Yes.
And you're, you would have to, have you already started those meetings with the principals and how a middle school, or is that going to come after this public forum? Like, just trying to think about how all this fits together.
In two different ways, we've started already at that problem. For me, of our- For me, I've already done, 'cause we had done a space-by-space analysis. You remember that spreadsheet of how many spaces? And I just, I just pulled out the spaces that would be purely high school and 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 then took with that some other discussions we had had because we have been, and Christine more than anybody, working on a middle school-only budget, which we'll talk about later on this meeting. And and so that helps us identify staff and program for a middle school only. The feature that hasn't been added, and we're gonna talk next week about that, is we think it has some viability, is what if there's a fifth grade included? So we have to build a budget that incorporates a fifth grade and also do a, an ed spec analysis, space analysis that that incorporates a fifth grade. And that gets to what you talked about, programming. Some middle schools, the fifth grade is still a, an intact classroom for the greater part of the day and they leave just for specials like phys ed and art and so forth. Others have a little bit of travel. They might have a teacher that does English, social studies and then they go to another space for math and science. And so we'd have to have some discussion around what kind of a model we would wanna have for that because that then plays into space.
And design eventually.
So, 'cause I'm kinda feeling like, I mean, the total square footage for just a five through eight would have to be much smaller than six through twelve, which is what we had before, which is like seven grades versus four grades. So the footprint on the renovation on that would would be smaller, you would think, right?
Yes, yes.
All right, so the price would probably, I mean, 'cause really, the the main driving factor of the price for this is the square footage of materials.
And it will go down.
And it would technically go down. So, I mean, I I don't feel like personally that I could make any of those decisions until we knew what that data was. I mean, we have to flesh it out. We have to know what those numbers are. Now, part of that makes me think, do we need to bring the facilities committee back?
I'll leave that to you. I I know my feeling was, we really vetted out build new and add reno tremendously with that group and I think they gave their strong feedback that of the the pieces they did not like in the add reno that got to small price differential, going to school on a construction site, a longer construction period. I think those were their major objections. That's the road around, although the road around could happen on this design.
I was gonna say, it might be able to.
Could happen, but but in any case, for the greater part, those parameters are still gonna be the same. You know, you're still gonna have an almost equivalent amount on on the two projects, I think it's fair to say. And you're going to have kids going to school on a construction site. You may very, I haven't done the analysis, but I would expect you'll have some portables for some period of time across the street.
And then there's always the chance that once again, we're going to remove a tile and we're gonna find something that's even more expensive.
Part of that, by removing the original and where the band room is, is gonna remove a lot of that anxiety because that's where most of it is. The two-story brick portion, if you look at the front to the right, we always calculate that to be a total gut, all the systems to be removed. So you're dealing with a shell. So that at least, we feel we've got something to work with. The problem with the old part is the different levels, the different heights, the different types of construction, the capability of having ADA accessibility, we're very limited because of the structure's design. The other parts that remain are more traditional. They're a floor-to-floor, they're a double-loaded corridor, they're a lot more conducive to be renovated. The old one was not. None of the classrooms met nine hundred square feet, for instance. At least for the most part, we're really close on the two-story newer part.
Just meet the minimum.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work with those minimums as as the first stab and see where we go and find out if the program drives some of the square footages a little bit differently.
So, once we do that program analysis, we'll have, we'll get a sense more of what the square footage that.
Yeah, we can calculate based on that, how many probable square feet you're gonna need. It starts putting a footprint.
And and some of the square footage that I'm seeing that we wouldn't, that we could kind of factor out, where I'm seeing that there isn't even a conversation about an auditorium. I'm all for having performing arts space. I don't wanna send that message. But an auditorium is, for a middle school, would be a little bit more than than we probably would need. But a stage and a cafeteria.
Yeah, a stage up with a cafe as opposed to a gym.
But that's a very different thing that I think that if you include an auditorium and a high school-sized gymnasium, I think that increases your dollars per square foot number.
We don't know yet. That's, that's, that's.
But in in general, if you, you know, if you, a dollar square foot, or the dollar price per square foot of classroom space is different than a dollar.
Correct.
A square foot of gymnasium.
Or cafeteria or, yes, specialty spaces.
So with making some of those minor allowances, it seems like we can probably get to a point where we can compare the new construction to renovation ratio that we had with the prior engineering that was done with this new model, which is a little bit of a smaller scale. So I I kind of feel like we can rely on that. Does that make any sense?
I guess we're not saying that, we're not gonna explore it, but it's gonna be a point, as we did with the last project, that we're gonna go down a road that you're gonna have to cull down the four choices at some point, maybe two, and then really dig into it.
Time and money.
Yeah.
Lot of design work and time.
A big one is the fifth graders. If you, if that, that debate can be brought into the fold fairly quickly because then you're dealing with, you know, four grades versus three grades. That makes an impact, especially on the renovation because the renovation has more limitations on land availability and utilities, for instance. But as we do the program, both five, six, seven and eight, six, seven, eight, we can review the program and give you a ballpark idea of square footage fairly quickly. Because once you do that, there's a factor for circulation corridor. And then we can just footprint it on the site and see if it affects it to what degree. And I would assume you'd probably try to have a two-story facility. As this is my gut feeling, you probably will head in that direction, which again.
Rather than three.
Right.
Yes, it just seems a way to go with it, with that kind of amount of students. You don't want a lot of stories. So what that does, it kind of expands that side automatically. Maybe we've got a lot less students, but the square foot impact on the two versus the three, of course, takes up more land. So that's where we're gonna have to go through the process of seeing where where it falls and then start trying to hone in, how much effort do we put on one versus the other? But I think the biggest one is the the fifth graders is number one, to try to discuss and see how that works.
Well, to tip my hand a little bit on regarding where the fifth grade should be, I think the argument of removing the need for an expansion of the elementary school is extraordinarily compelling.
Yes.
And I would need to hear a very strong argument for not moving the fifth grade. I I kind of see that as an automatic in my mind.
I mean, I I feel like we're, we're close. I mean, we're next week or week after knocking on the forum and I really hope that people come and tell us if they have any reservations about it because like you said, I mean, I really don't see there being any real major drawback to that happening.
I'm sure there's concerns and there are options. You need to weigh the reasons why one might be better than the other. But I wanna loop back around to Gail's earlier point that there's functionally no state aid program. And I don't, I don't foresee timeline-wise, you know, should we send our kids to Oyster River for high school, that we're gonna be starting this project on the day that the buses roll out of town. Because I just, I can't see how the community's gonna be able to afford whatever that price tag is without.
Price tag of.
Sorry?
The price tag of tuitioning or?
Well, the price tag of tuitioning isn't, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a significant number.
Well, two thousand and six, I mean, it was ten thousand dollars for the Fremont School District to send their children to Sanborn and that goes up every year for a child.
That number is still the number we need to hear.
Right, so we need to understand that and we need to understand the operating cost of a middle school and we need to understand what little bits of state aid might be available. And but I'm, the realist in me is telling me we might not be able to have the shovel hit the ground before there's real state aid.
No, no, I.
So we're gonna, I think we might need to have an interim plan, but I don't want that to be. The last thing I wanna do is kick the can down the road in any, any of these options because.
But as you know, any, any delay is going to mean fixing all the fire and life safety issues.
Oh, yeah, we're still up.
And we know the number to that.
Yeah.
Roughly, yes. I mean, it's, the number's getting a little bit dated. It was two million two years ago.
But we're whittling away at some of that this summer by.
Some, we are, yes, we are, yeah.
Do some of those fire and life safety things go away if we decide we're not gonna use the oldest part of the building and just tear that down and build a, you know, a wall with a stairwell?
That takes away a lot of those compliance issues are in those areas. So when you do that, you you remove some of them. And if you do do any kind of renovation, you're probably gonna put an elevator in. It's kind of one of the top on the list.
Yes.
Because the chairlift is not very.
Reliable.
We actually got one of our code officials stuck on it last time we went and inspected.
Oh, that's fun.
Yeah.
That was one of the big expenses. We have to have something for people with disabilities to get up and down.
We need something of much more convenience. That, that does meet the code and that's kind of the low end, but the reliability is such that it has its issues. And to replace it in kind, it's probably better to try to provide an actual elevator, which was on the dockets some years ago, but got removed. But it's, it's one of those elements that's very difficult to weigh. I mean, it's money and and it kind of works and gets you by, but.
There, there's like dignity issues that go along with.
Well, and stops the road.
Being on display and shutting down.
Well, the lady had fun with the fireman. They took her down.
And then the kids can't get by.
Yeah, I know, that's the main quarter.
And the hallway's crowded as it is.
Can I, can I ask for this pup, this parent forum for next week? Is there any way we can create some form of, we have plans and pictures and we have literature and data. Can we have that displayed so that those parents that come to hear the transitioning of fifth grade into junior high school? Can we just show that as well so that they have a visual of the potential things that will be happening? So that we can start just visually getting it out to people who show up for me.
We don't have anything.
We have nothing.
The designs are set for six through twelve. They're not set for.
But, but we have things.
Not, not that could show that.
Not that could show that.
We don't have a slideshow. We don't have any kind of.
We've never worked with that scenario.
Can we, can we create, these are, this is option one, option two, option three? No, I, I understand that.
I just know we can turn around.
There's no way you can turn that around.
That quickly, yeah.
I'm not talking about with just dollar amounts. I'm talking about, these are the options, just plain and simple scenarios, scenario one, scenario two, scenario three.
You're talking just a PowerPoint slide presentation?
PowerPoint or, I mean, here's a publisher document or something so that people can see what, what we're discussing here. People have something visually in front of them that they can understand that these are the decisions that we're gonna have to be making as a school board and as a community.
Can do some slides in terms of the options that we're talking about.
And that's, that's great.
I think that's what you mean.
You know, just something so they can start seeing that if, there will be some anxiety when or if we choose to have fifth grade in the junior high. And if they make that decision, if we make that decision, then these are going to be the other options that they're gonna have to help to to choose as a community. And I think now is the time that we start showing them, here's what we're really gonna be working on and we need your help with this. So here's the information. You know, because here we are, we're talking about it. We have one person in the audience, you know. So I, I mean, I, I really think it would be proactive to get the community some documents that they could look at and start writing notes on, possibly.
I'm all for handouts and.
Getting to a point though where there's a option one, two and three sort of floor plan scenario, I think is way too.
No, it wouldn't need to be financial, it wouldn't need to be a blueprint. Just what you said verbally.
Yeah, in words.
Put visually on a paper.
Yes, right. I can do that.
Just to add more stuff to your plate.
Yeah, yeah.
You've got time. Anytime, I've got more ideas. But I, I, I just come from a proactive approach. Yeah, I think it would be helpful for parents who are now gonna have to start really dealing with.
And we do, we have new families that really haven't been here the last ten years that don't know and it happens every time we have a meeting. So, and there, you can go on the website, look at everything, catch up. Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm all for having options. We have more than enough, right?
You have too many.
You have too many, so we're gonna try to get them down.
So, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying and I certainly don't wanna take any of the money that we have. The town has allotted us to come up with plans and like just frivolously.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't wanna, that's, I don't wanna do that, but I do feel kind of like, right now, it's a little bit put in the cart before the horse. Like, we still need a little bit more information before we can be like, okay, this seems, I do anyways. I feel like I just can't.
I guess what Cliff was saying, I agree. You, you need to get to first the big picture, but you gotta start at some point, concert your efforts with more realistic avenues when you find them out.
Right.
If it's obvious that staying on the existing site quickly will fit very comfortably, then you pursue that heavier. If you're finding that one straining like it did last time, maybe you, you start looking the other way. But that's kind of what I'm saying is when you get the big picture, when you start focusing, is not spend an exhaustive amount of time on four options all the way to the very end.
Right, right, no.
It's expensive and time-consuming and it's, it's confusing sometimes 'cause all the positives and negatives are very difficult to sort out at a point in time.
I hear ya.
With the, with the last facilities committee recommendation, I certainly was in strong agreement that the best solution was new construction. I'm gonna need to be convinced that because we're not serving as many students, it might be a different, it might be a different conclusion.
Okay.
Yeah, so I do. Any other questions or?
I'm all sorry.
Did you have anything else you want?
No, I don't whether that.
All right, well, that's great. Thank you, Dan.
Good, good.
Appreciate.
All right, so, question agreement update.
I already, I gave that.
You did that already. That's great.
Put that into my facilities report.
All right, school spotlight preview.
A minute.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Bring a note. Yeah, school spotlight.
Anything that makes you smile is a good thing.
Oh, boy. You know, I've done a lot of things in forty-two years in education, but this is the first. This is a first for me and and I'm certainly out of my element, but let me explain what that means. Early on here and looking at coming to decisions about a new school, you know, people said to me, gee, you know, Deb Brooks did a great video walkthrough of the high school and that was something that's really valuable to people. And would I consider doing that again? And and I would, but I felt timing was, was right and depending on when you do it. And and I knew the time was here. And yet, a, a three-hour walk through the school with me sounded pretty boring. So I thought, I, I kept mulling it over my head, saying, how can I do this? And then, and then the other thing that was going through my head is, it's not just about the building. It's what happens in the building because the thing that we're always saying, I think, or we try to anyway, is that, yeah, it's an aging facility as Dan just described, but what happens in that building is really special between teachers and kids. And 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 we need to be able to convey that. Now, other, when others have talked about the building and educating the public, it's been, Jim, you gotta get them to come to the school. And boy, if you could get them to come during the school day. And, you know, there's been some attempts at that, but that hasn't worked. So anyway, as my brain kept mulling these things over, it all came together into doing a series of shows on channel thirteen, which I've titled School Spotlight.
Yay.
And, and so the concept is, it begins, we've done, actually, we have three episodes already, well, two done just about, and the third one is gonna have some, some more taping next week and then we'll be there with that. So my goal. So my goal is I want three done before I really start talking publicly and we start putting pressure on me to do more. And, and so, and so the first episode was about the art program because I wasn't going to, I was gonna chunk the school up. And it's really not about the school system. It's going to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach over to the elementary and try and bring the, where I can't bring people into the school in the school day, I'm gonna take the school day to them. And, and they can watch it and learn about it on, on channel 13. And it's not just about visiting the schools. It's about giving a voice to the staff and giving a voice to the students, which is a good thing. And, and then I can foresee times when it's not even just about that. It might be a group of people having a, a roundtable discussion about tuition agreements or fifth grade or whatever might be a pertinent issue. But anyway, where we are now, we've got the art program being done first, then music and drama, and then the next one that we're finishing up now is phys ed and health. And then I talked to Dan tonight, the next one we're gonna do is the before science egress show.
Ooh, nice.
And, and so later on there'll be an after.
A grand reveal?
So what we do, and like with the art one, and I'm gonna show you in a moment here, six, six minutes of, of, of the show, just a small portion. And, and what we do is we first tour the school, the, the space when it's empty and talk about it as an instructional space. When we were in the art room, you know, we talked about, you know, we saw the, the photography lab, if you wanna call it that, and where the kiln is and the, how the press of space and the limitations. When we, when we did the, the music room, we, the stage was still set with the play. So we went back behind the scenery and saw how players operate back there. So anyway, we, we inspect the spaces and try and describe it, good and bad. It's not just, you know, whining about, oh, the space. I mean, we did phys ed, it was terrific and, and, and the weight room has, has some things, but... And so then we shift into a discussion with a teacher. No, no, then we shift into videos of the class. So like, in this class, or it was where we were in art. And so we're videotaping the kids, just, and the teacher teaching and the kids working and interacting and so people get to see an art class in action. And, and then I stop, stop the action and talk with the students for about 20 minutes and with the teacher and ask them a bunch of questions. And then, and then the concept is I wrap up with what I take away from all of that. And hopefully that draws people to think about what they take away from all of this. So I am a TV host.
Whoa.
Ryan Seacrest.
This will not be a, this is not gonna be a springboard to any new career, I'm gonna tell you right now and you're gonna see it in a few minutes. But, but I'm gonna do my best to bring the school and its people to the community. And that's, the schools, I should say, not the school.
And then when people have questions or comments about it, they can write you.
They can go, they can go to these and, and, right, and, yeah, and they can, they can write, they can email me, they can make suggestions as to how it could be improved. I talked with Chris, cause Chris Williams has been, you know, really right beside me through all of this. Talked with him about, you know, we posted on our website, we posted, I don't know how he does YouTube, I, I don't know how that works, but anyway. Amica can help. But in any case, so that people who don't get channel 13 can see it. And so that, you know, if, if you don't get to see it, you can go back and check an episode at some other time. So that, you know, my goal is by, whenever we're making our big decision, be it next December, next March, we will have traveled through both of those schools and through all of the issues that I think are pertinent. Because my, my belief is whatever this community decides, they need to be fully informed. And I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure they understand what's, what's at work and what's at stake. Okay? So if you'll go to the audience, we'll watch six minutes.
Oh, boy. Oh, it is cold in here.
Want to make it light?
Hang on, not yet.
Best time, remember?
It's cold. Oh, it's great.
She doesn't want to, cause she loves it.
So you can see, this is just a segment where I, I had just stopped the class and now I'm gonna start talking with them. Thank you for taking the time to come out of your class and then talk with me about some important things that hopefully we'll get to as we talk. And first I want to introduce Mrs. Blake, who's the art teacher here at the junior, senior high school. Terrific teacher. You know her, but I'm introducing her to the folks at, at home. Let's also introduce you, let's go around the room if you would, say your name and what grade you're in. Let's start right here.
My name's Katie, I'm a senior.
My name's Jake, I'm a junior.
My name's Cameron, I'm a junior.
My name is Gabrielle Diaz, I'm a junior.
My name's Evan, I'm a senior.
My name's Joshua, I'm a senior.
And you're gonna learn here.
Derek, I'm a senior.
Andrew Jabonski, sophomore.
Jessica, senior.
Sam, senior.
Alex, you're a junior.
Nicole, Helen, I'm a senior.
Emma, let's get in, I'm a senior.
Jacob, stop.
Okay. Now, I understand there are different classes going on here. Not everybody's taking the same course.
Right.
Let's talk a bit about that.
Yes, yes, this is really unique in my situation is that I run double and triple classes. First, I'll introduce myself again, Net Lake. This is my 17th year teaching at Newmarket. It's just a joy to be, to be here. So these students are absolutely incredible. This is the typical look of an art one classroom, so some of these students, it's their first introductory art course. It's painting, drawing, sculpture, printmaking, independent choices that they, that they choose. And then I also have students that are independent study students and they're making their own curriculum. And lastly are my counter clockwise students, independent study counter clockwise. So we're creating a literary arts magazine and they're working on it independently for semester two. So, show of hands, who's art one made in here? That's the majority of the class is art one. So first art class. And show of hands, independent studies. A lot of independent studies, so they've taken multiple classes, they've taken art one, advanced art. Show counterclockwise. And four, yes, four have gathered. My class size last semester was, it was 12 and four have gathered to take it on independently. So, thank you very much. Other than that, what else goes in this room is we have a ceramics course, advanced ceramics. I teach high school photography. It's both darkroom and digital, so our darkroom is included there and our children that's included there. And we have also youth portfolio design, which is customizing a student's career for entering in our college and finally advanced art.
It's a terrific program.
Thanks.
In a small space like this.
In a small tiny space.
Your challenge.
Yes, we're the last one using it.
I just make it on.
You know what? I try to keep the room as organized as possible. I know this looks disorganized. I kind of refer to it as creative chaos, but I know where everything is. The students themselves know where everything is. They have their own cabinet space to store their materials in and we just, we make it work. As soon as we get projects together, we're hanging them up in the hallway on display to take them out and we show them off to the public and we, yeah, we're constantly generating and turning it around and creating new things. So it, it does work. It's a small confined space, but it does work.
Now, for some of you, obviously it's not your first course. What do you like about taking art courses here? Why do you keep coming back? Yes?
It helps me express myself in different ways and like in a regular classroom, just like more than knowledge, just obviously on a piece of paper.
Other people?
You can like take chances of like being yourself, expressing like you like, like what you said.
I, I like the ability to choose what I like to do if I can do art and that's that I can make my own. So I'm not nailed down by any specific thing I have to do, I can just explore whatever direction I'm in.
So you're doing independent study?
Yes.
Somebody else is doing independent study? Okay, no, go ahead.
I'm a counterclockwise and I like the ability to creatively collaborate with other people who are a lot different than I am and create a lot of different things than I do. And we all work together to make, we all work together to accomplish one goal, which is the night theme. And it's the feedback and being able to sit down with people and talk and I love that. I love like the flow of ideas and people pulling things out of my work that I never would've ever thought to do. It's just really interesting to be able to work with a lot of other people towards one common goal.
Now, counterclockwise, obviously I can produce this using technology.
Yes.
How's that happen? Does it happen in this room?
It does happen in this room. We have two brand new laptops.
Ah, okay.
Through our NCE grants.
Yes.
And so this has given us the ability to not rely on technology elsewhere because it's not reliable in this sort of building. So we have Photoshop loaded on here, we have InDesign, we have everything that we need to produce our magazine to our specs to send it out to our publisher in Portsmouth.
And you've done two editions?
We've done two editions, we're working on the third one, yeah, so it's...
That's great.
Yep.
Now, is anyone among you thinking, as you think of that future career part, is gonna be a part of that? Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna do photography as a hobby and paint also, just keep it in my life. It's, it helps me express myself.
Do you do the photography now?
Yeah.
As a hobby, yeah. Somebody else?
I always thought that I wanted to do something different with my life, but a couple, I wouldn't even say like whole two weeks, we had a person from one of the art colleges come in and talk to us and it actually made me think about doing photography as something that I'd like to do. Cause I've taken the photography course for the first semester and I really enjoy it.
Obviously, as you look out there in, in a lot of careers, the visual aspect of communication is a key piece in so many, so many ways out there in the business world. So, so I can see there's a, there's a natural fit. Good luck. I'd like to shift to block schedule. Obviously, it's June.
That's it.
No, you might have another career, Jim.
No, it's not happening. Thank you, though.
I'm sensing a daytime Emmy at least.
Yeah.
Maybe we could call it a NEMI, a Newmarket Emmy, a NEMI.
You know, I'm always amazed at how well spoken our kids are.
I am too, absolutely.
Young adults who just, you put a camera in front of them and they were fine.
They didn't shrug away, did they?
I didn't see anybody making faces or rabbit ears or, you know, they, they know what you're doing.
And that, and, you know, and, and this is only a bit of a tease, as we say in the industry.
In the industry? Oh. Oh, my God. Are you kidding?
In the biz.
I need a wardrobe room, I gotta tell you.
Hair and makeup, I've been asking about it.
Seriously. But, but no, to get to your point, when this conversation continued on, I mean, obviously you saw me getting into block scheduling, right after that, I got into Hoister River, building a school, how does it feel? And the, the conversation was terrific. You're absolutely right, they're very well spoken people.
Wasn't just a room full of kids that had nothing to say.
No, no, very thoughtful and, you know, and, and I think, you know, as somebody who's worked with high school students my whole career, they, they deserve a voice in things and they say some very articulate things.
Wonderful. But you, I always hear compliments about our kids, about sporting events and things that, just what nice polite children Newmarket has and I, it's, it's one of the nice parts of being in this town.
Yeah. So Chris Williams has told me, cause I said, Chris, I've gotta tell them when this might be on. So he's committed to May, Monday, May 13th at 3:00 PM.
Gotta set my DVR.
Yes, you will. That's a don't miss show.
Say this again.
Monday, May 13th at 3:00 PM.
3:00 PM.
That's when he's gonna put it on and then obviously repeat it after that, but he couldn't commit to anything more than that right now.
And you and your co-stars will be available for signatures at the meeting later that evening.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes, we could sell that for meet and greets. We're the fundraiser.
It's a revenue source.
Wow.
You don't get to keep it already.
No.
No royalties. Oh, that's great, well, thank you.
So anyway, you're welcome.
That's a worthwhile, I think, endeavor.
Yeah, I'm, I feel, I feel good about it. I feel good about the progress we've made and, and I'm sure we're gonna meet the goal and I think it'll be good for people to, to watch and be certainly better than just a three-hour walk through an empty building.
So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Next thing on the agenda is summer retreat.
Yeah, and, and, okay, and there are actually two dates I'm gonna set.
Wait, are we talking spa retreat? What are we talking about?
This is not the retreat you think you're starting.
Oh, spa retreat.
No, 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 no.
Well, wait a minute now, we do have two new board members, they may have different ideas.
Yes, that's right.
But for several years now, we have held a, a school board retreat in the summer. I think when it first began, it was in August. I think the last couple of years it's been in June. I think we have come in on, on Saturdays, on all of them, usually eight thirty to two. It's, it's evolved over time, but, but the, the big pieces are a self-evaluation as a board. We go through a, a self-evaluation process that's defined in our policies. And, and we also aim to set goals for the year ahead. And so I'm open to ideas as when do you like to have it? I know we've had it in June the last two times, but I, I have, I have a feeling that it might be better for both of our, our new board members to wait until August. And it might be, and it might even be better to put it, normally we do it before the, the administrators have a separate retreat where they do goal setting. I think it might be better this time around to do it in the week following that, which...
Which is when?
Which is around August 22nd, 23rd, 24th, somewhere in that vicinity. But, but in any case, I'm open to ideas, we have to find, find a date to do it, but it's about this time when summer schedules start filling up, so...
It's usually the week of Nellie Camp. Oh, I haven't done that in a while. So do you want us to propose dates or maybe you guys wanna weigh in? Do you have...
Yeah, what's, what's your pleasure? I mean, do you, you know, do you wanna do a June date? Some people may already have those.
Well, June is just almost impossible.
Yeah, same.
Because of the extended school year, thanks to weather.
Yeah, you're right.
I would prefer early August because as a teacher myself, later in August I need to get to prepare.
I wonder if there's merits, I mean, in the past, some of our goals we want to share with the administrators, would you, where the board goals should kind of spill into what the administrators set their goals at.
And that's, and that's what I've done in the past, you're right.
So if, if we could, could do that, is, when did, do you know when that?
The, let me check, I think I've got them on here.
Is theirs on a weekend?
No, we do, when, 14th and the 15th of August are when we're meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So prior to that, if we did it on a weekend, would be August 3rd or August 10th?
Is there any way we can send an email to confirm when we are available?
We can, correct? You know, if we're, if we're targeting certain times in the year and then, then you can just send me dates and, and we'll see what works.
Cause I don't have those fancy phone things.
Oh, I have the, the third or fourth is fine with me.
You don't have to like, we don't have to designate the date tonight, but just kind of throw out some dates.
No, it would be, if you're still, if you're still comfortable Saturday, I mean, last time I know I spoke about doing it a couple of evenings, whatever, but I think people last year preferred Saturdays.
I'm really open to whatever.
Yeah, I can do the third or the 10th.
I'm open on both of those days.
So then why don't you, why, why don't you email me and then obviously I've got to talk with Meg and have her, and then we'll see if one of those works. Okay? Let's see, where am I here? Okay.
So we get massages and pedicures and.
Just like last year.
Whatever's in the budget.
Yeah.
Uh, the other date, I remember myself I was gonna talk about a different date. Here's what I, is what I'm feeling. We're, we're talking about a middle school only budget and now there looks like a companion piece to that, which is a five through eight budget. And, and I don't think we can do justice trying to handle that at a regular board meeting. So I wanted to ask your availability to add another meeting sometime before this, this school year ends. What did I say today? I think it was, I think the 23rd, let me look. Cause we meet on May.
Thursday.
Yeah, we meet on May 16th, which is a Thursday. And wondering, I'm sorry.
Are you talking June?
Let me go back. I'm talking May.
Cause we said the 20th.
We made, let me get back to May. There you go. We meet on May 16th. That's our next regular meeting. Now, May is one of those months where we get an extra, a bonus week, I guess I'd call it.
Yeah.
Because we don't meet on the 23rd and we don't meet on the 30th.
Right.
So perhaps one of those two evenings is available that we could maybe come on the 23rd. I, I would hope we can deal with it in one evening. But I certainly want to wrap up our discussions before the end of June.
23rd is best for me.
Yeah, I can do the 23rd.
That is before Memorial Day weekend, just so you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Works for me.
All right, then I'll, I'll check.
No?
It doesn't, it doesn't really work for me.
Okay.
I have the, the crazy sisters and mother. Love you guys, sorry. They're coming up for the girls weekend.
Okay.
Oh, the 30th then?
Um, that looks good, yeah. I've, at least from this old thing. If there's a conflict, I'll just do my best to try to make it.
Can't really do the 30th.
You can't.
You can't do the 30th?
I'm sorry.
Well, is there another, doesn't have to be the Thursday.
The 29th?
The 29th?
Is good for me.
How about 20 sec, 22nd?
22nd is the induction National Honor Society.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I got that.
I don't wanna go too close to the 21st. That's too.
No, gotta give you time. Let's see, 27th is my holiday.
So I'd say the 29th.
28th or 29th?
I can do the 28th or the 29th.
29th is good for me. I'm wide open.
Those are both open for me. Is there a town council meeting on Wednesday?
Probab, well, again, that's their, would be their third meeting of the month. I don't know what they do.
Probably not.
Probably not.
Would we meet upstairs if we had to?
So maybe, yeah, we could meet.
Or downstairs?
Upstairs or downstairs. It's not a big.
It's not, it's not gonna be televised or anything.
No, I don't think so.
But it's open, right, to the public?
Yeah. Yes, it's open to the public and, and, and I, and I imagine we're not gonna come to closure, but hopefully if we make enough headway, then we can finish processing during our regular June meetings. That's my hope.
Is the 29th okay for you?
I, I mean, I.
As, as far as you know, for right now?
Yes, I'll just email and we'll confirm and.
All right, I'll check with Meg.
Yeah, we're still gonna ask me to.
Okay.
All right, so that's middle school budget meeting.
And, and I think we do be wise to just say 6:00 P. M. If we can all make that.
Six?
Right, start at six. Earlier the better. All right, but I'll confirm that with you after talking with Meg.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
The next item is the collective bargaining agreement with our nice new copy.
Yep, I just, it dawned on me that I had not given you the, the final product that we've, we've issued to all staff. Everybody's got their copy now, so. Found and signed.
All right. Then you also gave us articles.
Yeah, some articles to read. Even myself, I haven't finished going through them, but, but one of the, well, as it said in there, one of the hot topics out there in education is flipped learning or flipped classrooms, as they're calling it. And it's the, the concept of using, leveraging technology to push much more learning outside the classroom and classroom day and then be able to take advantage of that in the way you design what happens in the classroom. So there's a variety of articles there. I have some more because it's in all of the periodicals and I'll pass you more and then maybe at some point we'll, we'll talk about it. Maybe even during our goal session, I don't know, but, but I've got more information to give before we go at it. Okay?
Okay. On to the business department, electric supply bid.
Yeah, um, the town and the school district, we went out and did a formal competitive bid to seek electricity supply rates. And I handed the school board the, the bid. And as you can see, I was quite shocked that the school district fared better when we were on our own versus when we combined with the town. So that was quite a surprise to me. So then, of course, I had to ask why. And I was very much educated on how the electricity and meters work. So what I found out was that because of the number of meters that we have, we have fewer meters than the town, but our demand for one is more constant and we have higher kilowatt per hour usage on fewer meters. And there's something that's called a tag fee, capacity tag fee. So the town has more meters that do lower volumes. So for every meter, there's a capacity tag fee, which means more fees and more billing. So that's what drives up the rate. So when you have more facilities, buildings, and you don't have a constant usage, whereas ours is very much constant because our school year is year round, it's pretty much 24/7. We have lights on. So that's what actually keeps our rates lower than the town. So what the school did is Matt Angel, the facilities, the interim facilities direct, ah, excuse me, facilities, finance director, we met and we decided that it was the best interest for the school district to go ahead and to secure a three-year deal in locking at the rates that you see here at the .072. And that was for two reasons. One, because we were advised by the specialists who do this for a living, that the 14, 15 year is going to be very volatile and they're projecting that the electricity rates are going to jump, just like we all saw this year with PSN H rates that just jumped 24%. We're gonna be seeing that again. So he told us to, you wanna ride that out, as well as the current town, the town is currently in contract and they can't get out right now. So what we did is we worked with integrity and we said, you know, can you work with the town, if the school comes on, can you work with the town to get them the best possible rate when they're out of their contract? And they said they would be more than willing to do that. So, and if you looked at the 16 month, that was by far the better rate. But what that did was it then put us out for September 14, which was right, gonna hit us right at that bad year because it'd be September and we'd be right in the wrong time of year to secure another contracted year. So he said, get through that year and we'd be better off doing either 30 or 36. So for that, I just went ahead and did the 36. So we're locked in right now at that rate for the next three years. And that's effective May. So we're gonna be officially off of the PSN H rates as of this May 15th.
Can I just ask only because I, I don't know, is this a, this is a fixed rate for three years?
Correct.
If the rates are lower than what they've quoted us here, do we go to the lower rate or we are stuck here?
We are stuck here.
Okay.
I can just tell you that this .072, the PSN H rate, the last time I knew, it was 11 cents. Okay, just so you can see that.
Thank you.
It made sense to make this move. We were paying point, we were paying about, almost seven cents, .68 when we were P and E. But if, for those of you, cause I know you're new, we actually, they don't know the full story. They either went bankrupt or we lost them. So we went right back into the open market where we were paying about 15 to 17 cents.
Wow.
Per kilowatt for two months before we actually got thrown back into PSN H, which we're at 11 cents, but we currently only budgeted the 68.
Oh.
So we needed to, it was very important for the district to make a move and to make it fast so that we could, you know, get a very competitive rate. And so that's why we did.
Well, thank you. How much do you think you've saved us over the three year? How much do you think you've saved us by doing this?
Well, it's not really, there's not really, well, in terms of the budget.
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, no.
Things could be.
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't, I can't project it. I mean, if you look right now, it's 24% increase.
Yeah.
So I mean, that alone is just near one. So it's really gonna be interesting to see and you can come, you can blame it on me in year 14, 15 to see what the rates are gonna be. Cause I have a feeling they're gonna be pretty, they're gonna be pretty high, probably 15 cents, 16 cents.
Wow.
Cause that's what they are right now in the open market. And so PSN H is a little bit lower than that because of they did some type of new, I don't know what they actually installed, but they just did some big upgrade to the facility, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
So does, with these new numbers, having only been with PSN H for two months, are we with, back within our budgeted amount or are we still?
Yeah, well, any of the choices is higher than what we were paying.
No, I realize that, but.
Correct.
So maybe I should rephrase it this way. The two months we were outside of what we should have been paying, did that completely blow up our budget in this line item or are we gonna be able?
We're in the negative in the line item.
But are we gonna be able to maybe make up some of it with this lower rate now?
No, because there's only one, we're gonna, we're only gonna see a month and a half.
Oh, because is it?
Cause it's June. Yes, yeah. So.
Academic year, sorry.
Yeah, those two months really kinda hit us hard.
Okay.
Cause I mean, they more than doubled. They were like 60% increase. So.
Well, thank you.
But we're in a good position now in going forward, so. Just thought I'd give you the good news.
Hey, thanks. Any other questions then? Okay, thank you. Now on to policy.
Policies, I have three policies here for a first reading. The first two are new and they're related. They deal with public gifts and donations. That's policy K C D. And so here in this policy, it generally defines them and talks about dollar limits and how dollar limits can be handled. And then the related policy K C D dash R is more prescriptive into how the school district will accept gifts or what gifts it will accept and so forth. So it really defines things, I think, very well. In, what was K C D dash R, I think it was, it referred to policy D I D. So when I looked at policy D I D, well, you last, the board last approved it in 2008 and I thought, let me check. And I checked with NHSBA's policy website and nothing had changed in it, but I'm just bringing it back as a piece of review because it's a companion to these other two here. Now, D I D dash R has a pretty significant policy dealing with fixed assets, assets. Christine might tell you a little bit about it cause she started reviewing it, but in any case, it, since it was still under review, I didn't put it in as a first reading tonight and you'll see it next time.
Okay, yeah, we'll talk about it the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or for the first read? I mean, I know we can come back at the next meeting and.
Just to explain to the two of you, the, the New Hampshire School Boards Association is really a, a prime developer of school district policy. They, so they have a website that we can access that, that gets to all of their written policies. They provide periodic updates. Usually it's like every six months, a spring and a fall update. In a meeting this morning, I mentioned to you, I was there with Barrett Christina, who's representative from them. And, and one of the services that they, they provide, and I think we took advantage of it perhaps back in 2008, is they'll go to districts and do a review of all of their policies. You have to pay for it and it's significant. And, but anyway, that's the source that I go to for policies. And then Kelly and I are the policy committee. So depending upon the issues, you know, we may tweak it, you know, and, and depending on them, like here, I go to Christine to review. Sometimes I go to principals or the sped director. It really depends on the policy.
I mean, the wellness policy went through.
Right, lots with that.
That took us a long time.
Right. So we involve whatever people are really pertinent to that and then bring it to you with that thinking. But here, I know Christine's looked at them, so have I. There's really nothing outrageous in, in what's being written by NHSBA and that's why I haven't proposed any changes.
The NHSBA does a fantastic job monitoring the legislation that comes out of Concord.
Oh, yeah.
And looking at the consistency with their recommended budget, recommended policies. So when a law changes or when there's something that's in play in the legislature, they'll recommend policy changes and that, so which is why it's kind of such a fluid, continuously evolving body of work.
Have you guys started getting those emails about the legislative? Cliff usually forwards them.
We've actually been signed up. We, we attended the Tuesday night meeting in Concord.
Okay.
It was very helpful.
Yeah, you wanna talk about that for a second? I'm curious. How, how you?
Sure, it was.
Put you right on the spot.
It was a really nice, um, kind of first glimpse of what we've signed on for, but it, it, it was helpful. There was a lot of questioning and answering, looking at the legalities of what exactly the role of a school board member is, not micromanaging, but assisting. And it just talked a, a lot about the right to know, about, you know, being a good public servant.
Policies.
Hmm.
Learned a lot about policies.
Right.
Which, I mean, it was interesting because you do.
Yeah.
Sign up for this kind of blindly.
Right.
And I found it very informative.
Yeah. There's a lot of inner workings that I never quite, I mean, you can see it, you can see the show every Thursday or every other Thursday, but you never really know what goes on, on this side of the table or what goes on in your office and how you work hand in hand with her. And so it was really neat. And they also provided us with a, a third edition.
Wow.
Becoming a better board member.
I get you.
Complimentary. So it, it actually was really helpful.
They were very nice and very open if we have questions.
Right, very helpful.
Regarding anything, they seemed more than willing to help.
Very willing to talk.
Right, right. I mean, even today, Barrett mentioned going to some school board retreats from other districts. So, you know, that's another option. You can invite people like him out to deal with specific topics.
And, and we did toot the horn for New Market because we talked about how setting the stage and changing the culture of the town and, you know, looking towards communicating the goal of the school board of the reading of the mission statement at every meeting and how we thought that that was really a, a nice way to, to get everybody on board and focused on the, the greater good.
The kids.
Yeah.
To remember that's why you're here.
That's right.
It's not me, it's we. That's what we learned too.
And I know, and I know Meg, Meg intended to, to it, to go there as well for a school board chair training, cause they have that. Good.
Yeah.
Good.
She was able to make it, so it was good.
Okay, thank you.
And we explained, I think, the last time we did the first reading and then we do a second reading. So you got that.
Yes, thank you.
Just trying to make sure what we've covered. All right, so on to resignations.
I have one resignation. It's a, it's an intent to retire. Actually, although he does submit my resignation, I know he's retiring. David Clark, who is a computer technology teacher at the junior senior high school. And that'll be effective the end of this school year.
I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from David Clark, the computer teacher.
I'll second that.
Well done.
Sorry, did I jump in?
No, we're.
You really learned.
Any discussion?
I feel like he just started, but I'm, I guess he's been with us at least five or.
I, I thought he had told me five years, but it could be a little bit longer than that. Yeah.
Well, thank him for his service.
Yeah, wish him well in retirement.
He's added a lot to our community.
Yep. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there are no nays. Any nominations?
None.
And there's no manifest?
Not tonight, no.
Calendar.
Yep.
Okay, we've talked about a lot of things. Is this the last bingo, perhaps?
I think it is.
Oh, we gotta make sure. What is it? May 11th, 11:30, the last bingo for project graduation. That's correct, right? Project graduation. All right, that's important.
Oh, you'll know soon, won't you?
Well, a couple of years. I got a couple of years. So that's good. Anything else? Anyone?
Well, candidate night for the charter commission on the 7th, I think is really an important evening. There's a lot of people vying for that. And then the voting is a week later on the 14th.
There is.
Twenty people.
And a lot of really good people. I'm really happy with the turnout.
Twenty people are running for 10 seats.
Nine.
Right.
Nine?
Nine seats, nine seats. Makes more sense.
Yep, so that'll be important in the following week would be the voting for that. The next budget committee meeting is on Monday, May 20th. That's when you and Christine.
It'll be school board, yeah. School district flavor to it, yeah.
Okay. And then June.
What flavor is that?
What flavor is that?
School district spice.
A little sour, sweet, you know?
Yeah, a little bit, very sweet.
So, we can, we can go to June, Emma, and we actually get to say graduation.
Oh, yay!
On June 14th, at 6 o'clock, yay. Anything else to add?
Uh, back on May-
Oh, sorry, I skipped ahead.
I'm gonna promote, um-
My badness.
On the 15th is the elementary school concert at 7:00 P.M., and on the 16th is the junior senior high spring concert, 7:00 P.M.
Which competes with our meeting, so we can't go-
I know, I'm really disappointed, but, uh, try and get out and see them, they do a nice job, they work hard.
They work really hard.
And I'd like to add a couple reminders from earlier discussions, at, is it 3:00 on the 13th is the first airing of-
Yes.
And the 7:00 P.M., um, middle school grade configuration meeting at the elementary school library.
Yes.
And we are meeting with Oyster River on-
14th.
14th.
At Oyster River High School.
That's what, 6?
At 6:00 P.M. we meet, yes.
That's right. And I had one question, which is, I didn't see on here the annual event that I really enjoy going to, which is the Top 10 Luncheon.
Yeah, I'll find out.
That is important.
What's the Top 10?
Oh, yeah, let's tell them.
So, the, um, at, at some point, very soon, the, um, the, the Top 10 ranked graduating